Spoiled, actually, uh, these past few weeks. Uh, considered granting a waiver to the limitation on successive applications. Uh, of course, it's relative to the garden municipal code one eight five dot one eight five dot two hundred.
Right, um, this waiver to the limitation on successive applications for the rental property, uh, came right earlier this year with conditionally permanent, uh, twelve and one. Uh, just a quick background for the timeline that, um, in January, um, that application was filed for oil and gas production on the property. Public hearing was advertised in February, um, and then at the end of February was the place commission meeting, um, where the public hearing was actually held. Planning Commission recommended approval with stipulations was originally scheduled to be before the capital or April, uh, and then was continued several times, uh, to ensure that all issues were resolved and satisfaction by the attorney. Um, and then on June sixth, the applicant contacted staff, uh, saying that they wanted to walk away from the project, uh, and withdrew the application. Uh, and just two pictures on your screen, they did them in the application during the process, um, the five hundred and sixty acre, um, that was originally submitted at two of the first phase, which is that southeast portion of that. Uh, the, uh, the property owner's attorney contacted staff, um, later in the day on June sixth, uh, twenty twelve, to request that they take over the application, but that was not possible since they're not the applicant, and the withdrawal had already been accepted by staff. So, um, per our city code, and those similar applications for the property can be accepted until June sixth, twenty thirteen, measured from the date of withdrawal. The governing body can waive the limitation for good cause, uh, so the property owner is requesting that we, uh, that the governing body waive that limitation in this case to allow them to file with any more applications, um, hopefully within that couple days. This would be the owner's plan to generate revenue to help pay the special assessments to benefit district, uh, which the first payment will be due in November. A couple of differences of the plan, applicant would be, uh, the property owner as opposed to, uh, the oil producer. Um, the application would then not be specific to a particular drilling producer, so, um, if the particular company or working with now backed out, they could still pursue another one of these things. Um, the information that was submitted in consideration of the waiver request, um, showed two different eighty acre parcels, um, fifteen relative to the northwest eighty acres and fifteen on the southeast eighty acres. Um, a note that came up today, um, is potentially the applicant may not come in with both of those at once. So, for clarification, this waiver would apply to the entire five hundred and sixty acres, um, so they would not need to do separate waivers for each application unless there are overlapping ones that we've already, uh, submitted a waiver. So, um, for example, what they did, if the eighty acres to southeast, um, in two days, and then six months later, they came with sort of eighty acres of the northwest, that would become an available state waiver, there would not be anything to come back to another.
But they'd need a, another C P.
They would go through the conditionally used permit. Um, so the anticipated timeline, uh, is October seventeenth, which is the first day of the application, and November twenty seventh would be planning commission and public hearing, and that was subject to the council, um, consideration on December seventeenth. Of course, that's all tentative, depending what happens here. Um, to avoid repeat continuance, what we experienced with the AP twelve oh one, the applicant is still working with our attorney on lease agreement. The lease agreement does state that royalties should go to the city and the default, um, and attorney also recommending that the city reserve the right to terminate the conditionally use permit in the event of a debarment of the special assessment. Uh, applicant is opposed to that, so the oil company, uh, needs assurances of the right to conditionally property. Staff is recommending approval, um, due to the unique circumstance of the special assessments being used on this property, uh, within the next couple of months. Um, also noting that approval of the waiver request did not constitute approval or a case support, um, conditionally use permit, uh, that simply allows new application or applications recently submitted, uh, which would then be subject to the usual conditionally permit process, including public hearings, where planning commissions and personal letter to be kept. Any questions, Mr. Staff?
So, there, there are payments due November twelfth, by November, before planning provisions on twelfth seventeen, is that all?
Actually, it's the payment in advance of December twenty. Then tax bills go out in November.
Okay.
How many barrels do they expect us to extract, uh, between now and December, whatever that day was?
Well, they can't extract until the conditionally use permit is approved, the earliest that they have to be approved is in December seventeenth.
Right, but I mean, the bill comes, I mean, it's not the year.
Clearly, they don't have to make up arrangements for the first payment.
Right, so, that's, that's what you use in the kind of the situating circumstances, that if they have a payment coming up, well, they're not going to be able to pay it either way, without the royalty, that's right.
Well, clearly, that's where their, their sense of urgency comes from, that they would like to get these approved as soon as possible to help offset those costs. Um, if not, or as much delay as best way, uh, if, or where, how, they're willing to pay for any payment something until they make one.
And I guess the thing is mitigation of cash flow from January one through June, uh, actually, that would have been in September of twenty thirteen, before a C P would be, uh, potentially approved, right? If we did not waive, isn't that basically the timeline? They couldn't come back until June, right, twenty thirteen?
June sixth, twenty thirteen.
So, that would put it through to, uh, July, maybe August, that's where they could see here, let's see.
So, I guess with, with the stipulations that Jim's recommending, I understand that's opposed to, but, does that mean that if they don't meet the twelve twenty tax payment, that that is not a void?
Yeah, no. Right now, there are five different taxing districts on this particular tract of ground at the Russell's home. Uh, we met with the Russells and their attorney, and Mr. Gilchrist is here tonight. Uh, we're working with them on the potential of an application, and nothing's been filed. All we're talking about tonight is their right to file an application. They don't have the full ability to review everything they're applying for. Planning Commission will, and you will. All we're talking about tonight is just the right to file an application.
And that's the calendar, there's no fees associated, you know, rating fees or anything.
No, there's, all you're doing is allowing them to file an application. The last application was by the developer, it wasn't the application by the Russells. This is the Russells.
And if they would have called first that morning, they would have been able to probably transfer.
That's, it appeared that they couldn't because it was, you know, it was spot on.
No, but then, okay.
They, we don't allow a transfer of an application. And the other application was by, by a different, who did?
Okay. One very simple question is, Jim, I think the reservations that you have in regards to creating the waiver, I know it's B P different, but the waiver itself?
No.
Okay.
But I think the ordinance is there, really, to keep the city from incurring costs for, you know, go into one development, you know, one drilling to another, and then, because every time you review one of these, we're building, we're getting built, basically, from the city, and there's got to be a reason why we put this in there. And we're not seeing why. Oh, we never issued a permit. I mean, this is the first time in your, to deal with this particular piece of property. There's no reason not to allow them to file an application and go through the entire process that we have in place.
Other than ordinance?
Yeah, that was the thing, I just, I struggle trying to understand why we had that deadline in there, that, is it because we, you know, we, we have one grid from here and kind of test the waters, and then the next one come in with the right lung, or, I don't know, I just can't understand why, why they would say, you know, a live person fly and then go, you know, have that, and how the.
It's probably any more thought than the typical C P U ordinance as you see in cities, as Mr. Gilbert has indicated, you don't want somebody just, they file one, two days, you don't approve that, they file another one. It's, it's, the only reason that's in there, I can, that, sure.
The limitation, um, it only sets a public hearing, I don't, so, first time, first time I'm starting, there would be a reserving, or, um, because that's different, the, the intent is that you're, if you're a resident, you're not getting the water every month, so, hey, you know, that means the file is longer term.
So, it's a rezoning, you're going to try rezoning, you're going to try to, you know, and one, and I think, well, you want to try to go to C three, and, I don't know, I mean, maybe we'll try to.
No. No, I think also that there's a little bit of negotiation with the driller as to what the royalties are going to be, and maybe, I'm just thinking out loud here, maybe they, they file with one driller, and then they, another guy comes in and says, I can do it for, they give me a bigger royalty, and now they, you know, I'm just thinking that maybe using the driller, you know, the negotiation with the royalties, maybe the reason that we have that in there is that it's common to go back and forth, I don't know. I don't, I don't think that's the reason.
So, the thing with that, you know, uh, for, I think, in, in, for, um, for, um, for the, 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 um,
So we have had one situation where at a certain point the planning commission are going to say for a little bit of a knock.
To me, any idea to how this sort of impact, uh, tax revenues, I mean, how is a oil well, uh, taxed?
Well, I don't think it's any city tax, there's a state tax being the unit tax.
Yeah, there's a property, there's a property tax as a, as a value.
To add, that will then, then, I mean, that's, that's.
And there's no machinery to put them.
This is originally, I mean, originally we took on, we've had, originally we backed it down, uh, on the basis of providing residential homes.
That's class.
That you pay property taxes and a much better deal than agricultural value. That's the, that's the.
So I think from, from our perspective, I think, I think where our future discussion is to be, I mean, it's not so much that where we are today, we're going to lose anything. It's what's the opportunity that we lose for the future.
But, but keep in mind, and let's be sure that we're understanding what we're doing, or what we're being requested, I guess. What we're being requested is that we grant a waiver. The assumption is that that waiver would allow a, or that that waiver would result in a reapplication for the CUP to permit oil wells. By disallowing the waiver, what we're also saying is that we're disallowing, at least the way I heard the ordinance, we're disallowing any action that involves a public hearing, including rezoning. So we're saying no action whatsoever. So to Chr- to Christie's point, you know, if, if the council as a whole, from a, a long-term planning perspective does not want oil wells within the city limits, then that would be addressed to the CUP, well, we'd have to address it at the ordinance, uh, level. We couldn't really, I mean, we'd have to have good reason to deny the CUP, but we'd have to address it at the ordinance level, uh, and then move forward. So it's two different, you know, we're, we're working, and it's a, it's a good assumption that the, you know, because the applicant stated that it's for oil wells, but understand that by not granting the waiver, we're, we're not granting the waiver, uh, for everything that would involve a public hearing, not just the CUP oil wells.
But I, I guess Mike, I, I still go back to you. I mean, unless Cheryl, you tell me I'm wrong, I, I don't see how we're going to have a discussion, if, if all things fall into place and they come before us with the CUP to approve in December seventeenth, I don't see how we are going to have the glob- more, the larger decision, discussion and decision by then. So they come before us, we're basing it on the existing ordinance, which basically says we allow it, so then what? I mean, then, then it's basically, we're, we're approving it if they move forward.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's, that's the other issue is we do, we'd have, we'd have between now and then, you'd have to.
And again, what just what benefit do we get out of that? We get ag, we get ag value now.
We got ag now.
And we get no additional revenue from it?
But what is the byproduct of this, guys? Excuse me, but, I mean, we talked about the negatives and we're getting way off course anyway, in my opinion, but what's the byproduct in a positive light?
The positive, you're looking for a positive in, um, speaker, I guess, Mr. Gilchrist. Well, the positive is they're looking for revenue to help pay for the special assessments at around two hundred and fifty thousand plus per year.
And, but aren't we already, I mean, we've been putting that bill for?
No, it's the first payment.
And that's coming up.
First payment because.
Part of why we're discussing this.
Yeah.
Oh, because of the litigation?
Yeah.
Because they got deferred for how many, how long because of litigation?
Well, quite a while.
They probably.
Years, eighteen months.
Let me, I guess, let me ask one thing to clarify. Right now, we're only voting on the waiver, and let's say December, well, they get all their ducks in the road and they come back.
We, we don't have to act on it that time, do we?
We have to, you have to, planning commission.
We would have to act on it at that time. We would have to talk to the, to discuss it, the merits of the front, we'd have to say at that point whether we were allowed oil or not, anything else.
There are time limits that you have to act within once an application is filed.
So if the planning commission recommends approval, then we would have to, uh, either, you know, we'd have to go through the process of not approving it by a, uh.
You could technically.
Super majority. Or sending it back to the planning commission for their study and so on.
But again, Jim's comment about, you know, they're trying to make their tax payment, it's hard to improve it, I think, that there's no way that they're going to be able to make any tax payment.
Well, this is, I'm talking, this, these payments run for quite a period of time.
Well, true.
And they're, they, based on what's happening around this property, there's substantial production going on, some, some substantial revenue, they're counting on that type of revenue off this site to help them pay the assessments while, while the real estate bubble, you know, till they recover.
The risk then, the risk then is once oil wells are established, is the land no longer liable as a real estate.
Because they're not, they're most likely only going to apply for a, a part of this property for oil and gas production.
Right. So that's the, you know, it, I, that's, you know, it is a, uh.
So they actually, I mean, there's, there's, I'm assuming there's a mortgage on the property? Or, we don't know.
I don't know. Well, it's, I mean, it's been in the family for a long time, I mean, how long, I don't know, but, uh, the issue, I mean, it was ag forever. The issue came about when the Hill Creek plant was built and is, and agreement for the acquisition of the Hill Creek plant, uh, we agreed to, uh, establish benefit district and, uh, provide sewer to the property. Our recommendation at the time was, well, not sewer it yet, we'll sewer it when we're ready to develop and, and the, the issue was pushed and it was promised so it was sewer. And, uh, the bubble burst and so consequently, there's no, uh, no need for that sewer. However, uh, the bill came due and benefit district five, there was no multitude of homes to spread it over. I mean, uh, Jim Russell's been working, uh, for a number of, you know, things, uh, you know, bioscience, uh, yeah, those kind of things to try and work in. So, you know, it, it's clearly, it's clearly a, a means of generating cash flow in order to accommodate the debt and that's, that's, that's what, that's what it's.
Then you can return the land later on, uh, through that remediation process to make it residential if they wanted to.
I mean, and to hold the lease.
No, absolutely, there's a lot of debt on there.
Because that's the Megan Valley discussion that we had earlier, is that further, further south, the same situation arose and we were told that that lease is there and those leases are for, uh, forever.
I can tell, well, number one, the assessment's gone for twenty years.
The assessment's gone.
It's come a long period of time. Number two, I can tell you, and I hope Mr. Gilchrist approved this, they, they are working out in their lease the ability to buy out the lease should residential developments return and it, and it's better for them to stop oil production and develop, am I correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah.
In the meantime, if we, depending on which way we vote, we're going to be on a quarter of a million, is that what I understand?
The first, the first payment is two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, they'll have to pay half of it in December, the other half.
And total amount.
But, but they're not going to give any revenue in between.
No.
They're probably not having.
It's a, it's a mitigation impact is all it is. When you're trying to, you know, you've got cash in hand now, possibly you're, or dead, I don't know, whatever the situation is, but the, the thought being if we get the CUP now, we can start gas exploration, seize whatever happens that we already done, we can start pumping oil.
We have, we have no indication that they're not going to make payments. We fully expect them to make.
The payments, exactly, but, but it's, it's how we're going to keep the payments ongoing is the special revenue. I can assure you that it doesn't take, uh, it doesn't take a month to get a, a pump placed and moved. I mean, they, they, they go, they go up fast. Uh, when, when oil prices started spiking, lots, lots of pumps started popping up on the landscape and they, you know, were there one, not there one week and there next, so it doesn't take long to, to get those operations.
May I address the counsel? Absolutely. Uh, John Gilchrist with the law firm, Payne and Jones, Golden Park, Kansas. Um, I think for the most part, whatever things been said is accurate. Um, the, the issue tonight is just the waiver. We just want the opportunity as the landowner to go back in front of submitting the application to staff. We have been working since, uh, basically June with staff and with Mr. Hubbard. Uh, we want the opportunity to go back in front of the planning commission, we want the opportunity to come back in front of you. We understand there's some other more political, philosophical issues out there, but as Mr. Hubbard has indicated, there's a tax bill due now every year of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for twenty years, that's a lot of money. Um, we're hoping, and this property has been basically developed for sale for residential and for since commercial around the edges, around the main intersections. Um, Mr. Ho- Mr. Russell's been working with numerous people, we've had contracts, those just didn't come through in trying to get a property sold to a developer. The market has just collapsed. It's starting to inch back, as you've heard earlier this evening, hopefully that will continue. Um, Mr. Russell's been working with all these different people in the area. But the fact is that oil is being developed, uh, adjacent to this property, to the northwest, there are pumping wells, to the southeast of this property, they are producing a hundred barrels a day, okay? That's a hundred barrels a day, that's a lot of income. Um, to the corner that's kind of notched out in the top east corner, they just hit some wells two weeks ago, uh, this is property outside of the city limits, but it's also owned by one of the Russell entities, um, and so they do know that oil is, they're hitting oil up there. And the, probably more likely, the first tract that would be submitted under a CUP would be the, the outline, uh, on this screen, probably at lower, um, the southeast corner that's outlined in purple, because just immediately to the east of that, they're producing a hundred barrels a day. Um, and so this would, if that's true, this would more than cover future, and obviously not the December payment, but more than likely, it would obviously cover the payment due in May and June, and then subsequent payments until we can finally get back to a, a real estate market where we can sell these, these properties and, and put homes where you do get the property taxes and things of that nature. So we would just like the opportunity to come back before you.
Mr. Gilchrist, thanks for speaking to us. Is it your finding group studying, uh, in that whole mitigation of the oil field that it can be returned to residential?
Yes, it has, and I think even with, uh, Jared Williams is the consultant hired by the city, um, I think he did an Peter Planning Commission meeting, meeting as well, that basically, it's just the immediate areas surrounding the plug, um, that you would not necessarily want to put a house on. That's the only area, and that can be designed as, as a green space, what have you, in future development. Um, I think the application that was submitted previously was for ten wells for this area. I think what we plan to submit will probably be fifteen for this area. Uh, again, we want to start out small to confirm that we can actually get well there before we pump a lot of money, that the, uh, oil driller pumps a million dollars into the area with wells and equipment and landscape things, things of that nature. Um, so we want to do it orderly, this is really a temporary measure for us. As Mr. Hubbard indicated, we have draft leases, which Mr. Hubbard has a copy of, such that we can buy out these leases, because we have filed against other oil developers or oil well holders, because these are hundred-year leases, we don't want those. That strangles the property, and I think that may be what you may be referring to, Mayor.
That's what occurred.
And, and so, um, we know that that, that could end up, we do not want that on this property. And so we are going into this with the opportunity, with the requirement, I should say, that we have the ability to terminate those leases.
The other, I guess, point out, I read, you know, the oil wells certainly, but they're, they're immediately north of the sewer plant that's flooded. So the housing stock would be.
A little different.
Would be, uh, in that immediate, in the immediate area would be limited, um, immediately north, I mean, if, if that's the immediate, immediate area, and I'm not, again, I'm not advocating one way or the other, I'm just pointing out, uh, some facts to consider as we go forward, if we're going to, um, look at a comprehensive development plan, what do we think would be appropriate, uh, building on the equator of, of our wastewater. If our old plant, we have services there.
I.
So.
We've got Laura here and you here, and so we've got a little bit of historical stuff here. Hey, in two thousand and four, we annexed this property into the city.
Yes.
And we were asked to annex this property into the city, is that not correct?
Uh, yes, and, and we were asked, we were asked to annex it as part of the agreement relative to the purchase of the land upon which the Hill Creek plant.
Okay. Um, and, uh, as part of that agreement, they were going to, they were going to be part of the benefit district?
Yes.
Right?
When sewer, when the plant, when the ground would be sewered.
Okay. So that was completed in two thousand and eight, at which time the Russell family bought suitances.
Somewhere in that range, ten or nine or ten.
It's been a couple of years.
Yeah.
So, so now, we, we concluded litigation in two thousand and eleven, and, and the history has been rough, to, to say the very least, correct? And, and is that how you, would you characterize it like that?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, absolutely. Well, uh, the, um, I would characterize it as, as cordial, uh, however, the Russells always presented their, uh, their case in a manner that favored their position, as with anyone in that case. I mean, it was never, it was never a.
And, and I didn't mean to say that it wasn't court filled, but it's.
It was never, it was never a, an adversarial kind of, uh, relationship.
So, so, you know, they sold this property, we did what they asked us to do, uh, when time came to, uh, uh, start getting the property assessed and paying the special assessment, they took up litigation, it dragged on for three years, and now we're looking to.
Through what?
Litigation. It was settled by agreement?
Okay, settled by agreement.
It was settled by agreement?
I'm getting my history lesson now.
Okay. But we're, but now we're, now we're talking about granting them a waiver? They, they were speculating when they wanted to get annexed in and be included in the benefit district, and Mr. Gilchrist just said a moment ago, if they hit oil. So now they're speculating again.
So what it is?
Well, I understand, but they speculated.
In the general.
Yeah.
Well, I know, but they're.
Non-associative risks.
Yeah, but they speculated, they speculated and then held up city business. And now they're talking about speculating again. Well, but here's where I keep coming back to, we spoke a little bit earlier about principal, and if the Russell family would have signed the initial, uh, the initial request rather than DBZ, this would be before us today. I feel like there, there's individuals that are trying to capitalize on the opportunity before us to, to, to act on the CUP that's not here, we're only going on the waiver, and the only thing that changed, actually, the family that owns the property is still exactly the same. The only thing is the drilling company is out, but nothing else has changed, so the opportunity's before us and now we're trying to capitalize on that, when if they would not have changed, none of this would be here, and then we just, they'll be waiting for the CUP, is that correct, Jim?
That's correct.
So that, that's, we talked about principal earlier, I feel like we're being a little opportunistic when really someone's, you know, nothing has changed as far as the ownership of the drilling, they, they're looking for actually a better partner for the drilling process itself. And I don't feel very good saying, no, we, we're going to put a stop to it now, we don't want to work with you until June of next year, even though really, um, it's still the same principles involved, it, it's still the city, it's still the Russell family, you're going to work with a di- a different company for the production of the oil, but that gives us an opportunity to stand in the way of it. I don't like the way that sounds. Here, here.
But for me, it's not, I'm not trying to hold anything hostage, but, but we did have the discussion multiple times in April, May, June, whenever those times were, each time when it was taken back, that the discussion was, is this something that we as a council want to do? All, every time, we've never had that discussion.
I still think that's a valid conversation. I still think it went up till here, we're talking about a conversation that happened somewhere else.
But, but what I, all I'm thinking is that once we approve this, if we approve this waiver, then they come and file, the ordinance that's in place today is the one that we have to abide by. So if they file on December seventeenth, I mean, listen, I'll approve this waiver, if we can all agree next week, we're going to get together for four hours and figure this out.
Yeah, it would be a work.
To work with the ordinance. That's my concern, because we're, if we approve this waiver, then we might as well say that we will approve whatever comes before us on the seventeenth, because that's the policy that's in place today.
Now, you think that I had a conversation before, we extend the, uh, you know, the permit, I mean, really, I don't, why would we want to have a discussion after we, we say yes? I want to have a discussion before, I want to know all the ins and outs, all the risks, I mean, it's the same.
But the ordinance.
It's the same, it's the same situation as we were in, in two thousand and four, before any of us got on the council, and that is, and Chris made a good point, it's, it's we're doubling down on a bad investment for the city, and the city's on the hook for the, the tax payment, effectively, if they, they don't have the cash flow. And, you know, they've done, well, at least one time they've made, made a bad decision, even when, as they pointed out, we counseled not to put in the sewer. So now we're, now we're, we're giving them a second chance, but we still have the bill to pay. I don't really have.
Yeah, it's a cash flow issue for us, if that.
I mean, I, I don't have the bill. I have the bill, I'm still having control of the property.
What year? Two, six, seven?
It was before the.
Was it before the recession?
Yeah.
Okay, correct.
It was right, it was right before the recession.
Okay, so after the fact, we're saying, I know it was a bad decision, I, I made a lot of bad decisions, that's saying here too, check me back.
Well, to be fair, to be fair, to be fair, to be fair, we had, there were a lot of permits issued, there were a lot, there were, there were a lot of lots planted from, uh, Madison Elementary for moving northwest, and they were empty. And, you know, we were talking about putting another five, I mean, this was five hundred acres of development, a lot, I wonder. You know, and there was a lot to be built up to that point, and that was the reason for the council to say, look, you know, there's, there's a lot happening, there's a lot that's got to happen first, you know, before this, this is a viable solution. I'll just wait, wait on the sewer, and it was a, you know, strike while the iron's hot kind of, of discussion, which is.
And that's my point.
That's why you have empty, that's why you have empty land here now. So, so the, 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 the council from the city, not the city council, the, the device from the city was full off on that, so you don't incur the cost on that land, we've got an agreement, and I don't know if there was concern that we would fall off, the council would change, you know, whatever, I don't know, but, 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 doesn't matter, there's concrete in the ground, and, uh, that's, that's where we're at. So, uh, again, using the system that's presented before them, they delayed, um, cash flow, and now we're at a point where the agreement was made, so that, that, that point is, is where we're at, as a way of, of generating cash from that land in order to pay that, pay that benefit. And again, be completely neutral in looking at it, not considering what happened, not considering anything else, but that really.
Premier.
Of, of, the direction to go. How long, how long in development terms will it be before the same lot yet to be developed to get to that point? How long will it be before that's a viable residential?
So the light brown, is that developed versus the green area?
The light brown is, is residential.
This is the.
Our, yeah.
This is the zoning map, and the green is agricultural, the lighter green is rural and Johnson County are zoning. The yellow color is the residential zoning, and the brown is RP three, which is plant garden apartment district.
So that's, and the, and the, the A just immediately south of that is the sort of plant water town.
So where, where is the debt built going from, since two thousand and four, when this was, when the cost were incurred by the city? And we're basically used to paying that bill, right?
No, you had temporary notes sold until we did definitive debt last year.
So that interest has been accruing on this?
But it was part of the project. It stays, you have, by state statute, you have to issue temporary notes so that the interest cost continues to be part of the project. So nothing was paid by us or by them, other than their regular taxable fray, until we issued the final debt, and then we immediately did the special assessments after we got the settlement agreement. So there hasn't been anything due yet, and it's not due, matter of fact, the taxable hasn't even gone out yet, and it won't go out till November, the first half is due in December, and with anyone in this room's bill, you don't pay it, nothing happens for a while, except that the city is obligated to make the debt payment.
Right, it becomes a cash, it becomes a cash flow issue.
I mean, nothing's going to happen to them if they don't pay until at least that three year thing, and there's no, you're going to have on the end of that, so nothing's going to happen to them. It's going to be us paying the bond payment with no returning revenue. But, and it's a big bond payment.
But, but I think the other thing is, I mean, we don't, do we have any idea what the property's worth? I mean, if they own it pretty clear, and they want to get out from one of these, and they sell it for less than it, what they planned on selling for is developed acreage, you know, developed lots, right?
If they don't pay the assessments within the three, five-year range, we will end up with the property, or someone will buy it and pay us.
And, and. Right, but they can hinder that process by, by lowering the, 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 uh, expected, uh, offering price to what, what is more realistic.
Well, that, that wouldn't affect us.
Kind of, but that's one way for them to make the payments, right?
Well, but then they'd be, they wouldn't have the property.
If they get out of things, they'd have to sell the property with that, with that palin there.
And the next person.
They'll lose the property.
And the next person to the owner could consider wait, wait three years before they do anything.
Right.
I mean, you can't force someone to make the payment until the.
Well, they can.
Attu clock runs until somebody forces their hand.
But they wouldn't be able to, they wouldn't be able to sell it without the previous assessment.
Yeah, they'd have to pay it, they'd have to.
Yeah, assessments aren't affected by sale. They still do know it.
You're saying somebody would have to pay it if the plant sold?
Yeah.
You would assume that would be part of these, the agreement when they sold it, but somebody would pay. Eventually, somebody would pay.
They'd pay it closely, they'd pay it to date.
Yeah.
Right.
It always do.
Year to year, whatever it is, yeah. So.
I know this is giving them a reindeer skin disease, he's a Texas guy, uh, they, they love the oil speculating down there, but this is, this is.
But, 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 if you look at jobs, uh, Mr. Marlowe, if you look at jobs, excuse me, if you look at jobs, working jobs from Califor- I'm sorry, not jobs, um.
Profits, like?
No, not even profits, excuse me, I've lost my train of thought. If you look at the number of people that are moving to Kansas, they're coming from California, it's about six thousand. If you look at the number of jo- I'm sorry, the number of people leaving the state of Kansas, it's eleven thousand, and a high majority of those are going to Texas. I'm not trying to correlate that with oil, I'm trying to correlate that with jobs. So when we talk about stuff like this, we're getting so far off base from what Jim has suggested and what Mr. Gilchrist has, has, um, confirmed, that it, it's just beyond me, that it's really less about beating it from Texas and oil and, and all the positives that I see, it's more about what is in front of us that we need to decide on. That's what I'm upset about.
And in the best interest of the citizens who are in the governor, we, we don't double down on a, on a bad investment.
I never mentioned double down, Mr. Hubbard.
Well, I mean, we.
I mentioned that we have a precision.
You're committing, you're committing to a development project that may still not yield.
I'm not even committing to the development project, that's.
Yeah, I don't.
We're talking about two different things.
As Christie said, once you, once you go to this path, you pretty much are staying.
I disagree with that.
That, well, I mean, you're, you're approving a, a.
I haven't approved anything.
Well, I mean, that's, that's what you're effectively doing with my.
No, just speaking my mind is, is you are speaking your mind, sir.
Do you not have the ability to, to delay that decision if you, if you say no?
Just a point of clarification, the city code does specify, uh, conditional use permits, that the planning officials, the city council can consider a variety of factors, um, in their consideration of it, um, and so certainly situations could be placed, and that's something, um, that would make it more fallible, or, I mean, certainly do have the opportunities in mind, just the grace of the waiver does not mean we have to.
Or, I mean, we certainly do have the opportunities, and might, if the decreed waiver does not immediately have to approve the conditional use permit. So this is simply, are you going to allow them to apply for Division 6.13?
That's, that's the question. The question is, are you going to allow an application for that land with the, with the assumption, of course, that the application will be a CUP or I mean, that's, that's, and that's an assumption. The action, the action is truly that. Are we, will we consider waiving the timeframe stip, the timeframe requirement we have currently in place regarding reapplication? So I, I think we're, you know, we're at a point where we're kind of going back and forth and back and forth.
Can I, can I just ask one more question? If we, if this CUP comes before, if I ever stay in planning commission, as we can, whatever, stipulations and what have you. However, what are, what are the chances of litigation if we deny it, them coming back and saying, your ordinance says you allow this? Why did you deny it?
There's always a chance of that litigation in any reasonable
And everything, you know.
But not until, but, but if we deny it tonight, we have Lisa told you to consider whether or not we're on that path. That's, that's what they all say, decision making that we really need to take out.
And maybe by June, Mr. Hubbard and the Allen family have worked out their, Russell family have worked out their differences. And, and the Russell family isn't in opposition of the, of the stipulations that you're, you're making.
Yeah, just a, excuse me there, and I do appreciate that clarification, because I felt like we're getting so far off base. And I recognize your stewardship of our community. I'm not, I'm not at all sideways with that. The point I was trying to make is we go down these rabbit holes from time to time, and we get so far off base that we forget about really and truly what's in front of us. And I think that you summed it up for us, and I think that Chris, Christie brought, you know, kind of back to focus. I think that's really my point of my comments.
So assuming, assuming that, at least my assessment is that no one's really going to move either folks to their side of the
Cause I'm not even sure who's
And I'm not sure exactly what that is. I think, I think we really do need to take some action regarding item 11. So I would need a motion of some action.
I agree, though, we grant a waiver to allow the Russell family LLC to have property owner, record, or representatives to submit a new conditional use permit application for oil and gas production within 12 months of the withdrawal of similar conditional use permit applications for substantially the same property located on the north side of 159th Street, East River Corner Road.
Is there a second? Motion dies. Allow a second. Is there another motion regarding this item? At the table, we, at the table, we gotta do something.
I know we do not grant waivers to allow the Russell family
Second.
Wait a minute, we need a motion.
We've got, I've got a motion tomorrow.
We don't need a motion.
Yeah, that's true, we really don't. We already decided it's a decision.
Yes, you really don't.
That's true.
Oh, that's true, we're not, we're not, okay, right, so This dies? Right, okay. All right. Thank you. That was a good discussion, you know.
Absolutely.
Very good. Staff, anything for council? I was waiting for
No matter what.
Council, anything for staff?
I have just one, I'm sorry, I have one quick question. The people that came and spoke at the last meeting regarding the forms, have we addressed? We've had a line with them.
We haven't sent a letter, because we've been trying to gather, contact the railroad, haven't heard back from them. The other thing we've been trying to do is instead of meeting consultant at the Happy Place Quiet Zone in Moonlight, Tim has a meeting scheduled with friends who want to sign the ride. So we thought we'd wait till we had something concrete to report before we come back.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Have, has it been related to the people that came and spoke that
No.
That we're, that we're, we're working our way through. I know, working our way through this. I, I just feel like there should be kept up to date with what we've done and where we're going.
I'm sure they'll all look at the video and
They're watching.
Yeah, as soon as it's, as soon as it's posted, because it's going to be four hours long, it's going to take a minute.
One other thought, not to complicate the issue with the quiet zone. However, when, when we had the development, there was a discussion about extending a road. We would grant access along the tracks to a point south of Moonlight, near the entrance to the park of a road into the cemetery and take the track, take the crossing out altogether. Railroad's favorite, because they don't like at-grade crossings. However, we also were in a position of negotiating costs with, of that road with the railroad. That is another option. It would certainly take care of the quiet zone issue, probably, you know, a shared event. I don't know if railroad or county and the city would be able to do it, along with the cemetery board. It wouldn't need to be a city-grade road, because it's just a drive within the cemetery. So another potential to consider as we go forward. And that, then that gets them south of the tracks on Moonlight, they're in and out, and they've got more than one way, and they don't get trapped in the cemetery, which is currently Okay. Anything else?
I get a couple of things, just real quick. We've been, there's been some emails that have gone back and forth about the city visioning session. The date of October 29th has been kicked around. I'm just wondering where we are with that. I'm, I'm prepared to move forward on October 29th. I'm prepared to move forward on October 30th. I don't really care when we get started, when it's between those two days. I just want to get started. I think everybody else does too. I mean, I, I think everybody that I've talked to is, is ready to start doing the city vision and stuff. So, I mean, where are we with that? And, and what's it going to take to, to get that done and started this month?
Probably dialogue and trying to get the basic here was whether or not we are, if we should go forward at this time, or whether we should be looking at that in the frame instead of now, so that we're looking at that when we have that deal for members of council, that we express our counsel.
I was, yeah, I was under the impression, you know, just informal
There was not consensus.
No, there wasn't consensus.
To move forward and
There was dialogue, right. There was not consensus.
Well, can we talk about that?
Sure.
Cause I, I, I think we should move forward.
Yeah, I got till six tomorrow morning.
Maybe, yeah. Yeah, I'll, I'll start before October 29th.
I don't, my concern, I'll be, I, I don't have the availability during award day. Unfortunately, I don't have the flexibility of some. I can't be here at 2:00 for a four-hour work session. So night nights are in the evenings for extended sessions over the weekend. So, and as Cheryl and I visited, that's simply, we've had to work around that schedule with our council roundup sessions. Another thing, I'm just not there.
So it's what time in the evening, and then any weekends?
Obviously, besides holidays, I'm certainly traveling holiday times. It's been, I mean, it's difficult, I think I don't have much
My idea is not to put you on the spot, but to be flexible with my time to match your time. I mean, I can only speak for myself. Larry, Chris, Christie, I mean, are you guys able to flex with kind of each schedule in mind from a commitment perspective?
Yeah.
So can we work with
So can we, okay, so then, the dates that we have were two days in a week, so then we go home for a weekend date, then we get in back together. I'm going to be on a vacation for a weekend. Or at least using it.
I thought we were going to Lady Dylan evening.
Lady Dylan.
Yeah, I just said evening.
Evening, by me too.
Okay.
Evening's a preference for me as well.
Yeah. Okay.
I don't do anything on Saturdays.
Yeah, you know, it's not like there's any football games on. Yes, you do.
They're losing.
Right, what else?
Yeah, and the other one, there was, I'm sure everybody might have seen the rating cities on permits and